These chairs do weird things sometimes.
Oh, wow.
I am.
They all do. You can unlock it on the side of the box.
It's comfy. It's on your left hand side.
What are you gonna sleep, huh?
I just lost about eight inches.
I don't need that.
Yeah.
Stand up to let it go up.
I mean, if we have a long one.
One of them be pushing and pulling out.
Yeah, if we got a bunch of people, yell them and just get back.
That's pretty nice.
Yeah, these sleeping chairs.
I had a teller that did that.
I just need to pull up on my footrest now because I'm too short to lean back.
Too comfortable, you're not sleeping over there.
I might.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll call our meeting to order. This is the Planning Commission meeting for February thirteenth. We'd like to welcome all who are attending with us. And we have all of the commissioners with the exception of Kathy Eskelson, who is excused. We will move to item B, which is public comment. However, viewing no one here, we'll pass on that and then move to item C, presentation and reports. Mr. Eggit, please.
Thank you. I'll cover briefly what we covered upstairs. I just noted that the new maps are available both down here and up in the workroom, the future land use map and the zoning map. Has been updated in other places throughout the office where they need to be. I noted that both Steve and Michelle will cover community development activities with Michelle doing probably more of the worker or lifting, if you want to call it that, than Steve, but they both be carrying the load. And they have put out, I didn't notice this, but they have put out an announcement for the day that I brought notes to Steve. So they're just waiting for good quality applicants to come in, but it's taking a little bit more time, as you can imagine. So. And then I noted that Bricks and Mini Figs will do a ribbon cutting a week from next Monday. And I think that that's it. We talked briefly about a business that's going in between J-Dogs and Starbucks. It's a taco business. That's really all we know at this point, and we expect a building permit to come forward. And I briefly discussed fifty-six hundred South. And there's some decking improvements that they are working on to connect Free Park Drive over to the fifty-six hundred intersection. And we'll be working on the I fifteen bridge decking in the next coming weeks. With a transition off of the freeway in March to be the new access to Riverdale Road. So I think that's everything I covered. If I missed something, please let me know. Thanks.
All right, thank you. We'll next move to item D, consent items. Consideration of the meeting minutes from January ninth, work session and regular meeting and January twenty-third work session and regular meeting. Do we have any discussion on the minutes?
I thought they looked fine. I looked.
Okay, a motion would be in order, please.
I make a motion that we approve the consent items.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion on second? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. That was unanimous. And so we'll next move to item E, action items. Uh, item one, public hearing to receive and consider comments regarding proposed code addition of Title Ten, Chapter Thirteen, Article One. Airport overlay zone and airport area special regulations ordinance to be added to the Riverdale City Code is requested by the Community Development Department and required by the state of Utah. Mr. Eggit, please.
Thank you. All I'll note for the purposes of the public hearing, and then I'll go into more detail on the actual consideration as we go to that point. On the public hearing, we did advertise the public hearing in accordance with state and city codes. There were no comments provided prior to the meeting. The information is available also on our website. And obviously, we don't have anybody in attendance this evening to join us for the public hearing. And with that, I would defer to the planning commission if you'd like to move forward, and then we'll discuss the item in more detail after. Thank you.
Thank you. So we would now consider the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, we'll now call the public hearing to order and open the public hearing for, to receive and consider comments regarding the proposed code addition to Title Ten, Chapter Thirteen, Article One, Airport Overlay Zone to be added to the city code as requested by the city Community Development Department.
I forgot to note that is Article I, not one.
Article I.
Just as a clarification as we discuss going forward. No problem.
We made the same mistake last week or two weeks ago.
All right. Seeing no one here. Do we have a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, that was unanimous. We'll now move to item B. Consideration to forward the recommendation to city council regarding the proposed code addition to Title Ten, Chapter Thirteen, Article I, Airport Overlay Zone and Airport Special Regulations. Mr. Eggit.
Thank you. So on the the executive summary you have in your packet, I tried to flesh out a lot more in a summary is way, but the good detailed information. And basically, this is following House Bill two oh six that was passed last year, the state legislature. It's something that's required by the state of Utah within any jurisdictional area that is within five thousand feet of a runway area of an airport that's used by the public. And so we're required to follow these mandatory regulations. And if, as you know, it's the last sentence in the first paragraph where I noted cities that fail to adopt an airport overlay zone by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four will have more stringent mandatory regulations placed upon them by legislative directives. So, and if you're curious what those directives look like, you're welcome to look at. It's kind of near the bottom of that legislation, but what they're trying to do basically is either you do it, or if you don't, then we basically are gonna, we're gonna take away your land use and even air use rights of your city as basically, I keep saying basically, but it's giving away your like an easement or entitlement to that space. So either you as a city pass an ordinance that's less impactful, or the airport can just take what rights they need to as they see fit, and there's nothing you can do about kind of thing. Okay? So that's why this bill is so important to get approved. I did work with our general plan staff, Chris Hupp, that gentleman that helped us with that in putting together this code and paring down and tightening up the language. And we looked over it at the last meeting. I've since also shared a copy with Steve Brooks, our city attorney. And his only comment back was this looks good exclamation point. So apparently he's okay with it. But he did read through it and says it reads well, and it should. I mean, we really, we really just took Ogden Airport's code and made it fit our needs where appropriate. So that's their general plan, obviously reflects that with the airport overlay zone being shown in the land use master plan and as evidenced by our map on the wall. And then you could see I've given a red line copy of it. Then we follow with a clean copy of what that would look like in our code. And then following the clean copy, you'll see the actual regulation as put forward by Representative Ballard and Senator Wyler as HB two oh six last year that was approved. So. And then I, like I noted too, there's no, there were no public hearing comments provided. So. I mean, no public comments provided prior to the public hearing is what I'm trying to say. So with that, I think that's all the material. I defer to the planning commission unless you have it. Well, I defer to the planning commission for you if you have any questions or comments for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion on this item?
We talked, go ahead. We talked a little bit last week and you were kind of pointing to the map showing where it might come. Those black dashes on the map are the overlay zones. Is that correct?
Yes, I need to clarify something. I think I sent you away with a little bit more fear than was necessary about that area. As I looked over the code and read FAA regulations in more detail, better understood it. It's more, it's development and redevelopment. So if a home were to be fully redeveloped, they would need to get approval and a letter to FAA. But if it's not a redevelopment, like, you know, someone's turned a home down and building a new one or substantial redevelopment, then it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be required. And really, even the FAA is interesting because what the FAA regulations require when you look at the state or the federal code on it, they really only care about what's in the upper areas within range of the runway. But the state legislature took a few clauses and applied it to everything, even areas that don't necessarily need it when you look at the FAA regulations. So either this is gonna be me being a little editorial, either the legislator didn't understand what the FAA regulations originally were intended to mean, or they didn't care. That's my opinion.
I think it's important for anyone in the public who's watching or who is aware of what we're doing here. It can seem scary, the idea of some of these regulations and code we're passing. But as you said, the FAA regulations are counting on the everything being like flat or upwards of the runway. And where we have the Ogden Hinkley Airport at a higher elevation than our city areas, this really doesn't affect our city much, but it's good to have it in code, like you said, to protect.
It's only the West Bench.
Yeah, West Bench is really all they care about. When it comes down to it and reading over the FAA regulations, that's the only area that would really fit what they're wanting anyway. But it is a zone area that's established by code. So were there to be development redevelopment in other areas like Kangarf redevelopment, they would need that letter just to, just to clear it, say they did. But as was stated by Commissioner Nolan, it's really that upper area and Commissioner Anderson, it's really that upper area that they care about. Like, like when America First, I think I noted this in the last meeting, when America First built that that admin building, I got a call from Ogden almost while, within a little while of it going up, like, what is it? And how tall is it? I mean, what, you know? And this was before the code went into place. So you can already see how the Ogden Community Development Leadership is viewing development in and around its airport and why this bill even exists. You know, they're probably not the only one, but I'm sure a few. There's probably an airport coalition out there in the state of Utah, and they probably went and talked to representative and she took her and ran with it, not fully understanding what FAA guidelines meant or not caring. So, and it's interesting because as I looked at it, it really only cares about buildings that are like eighty feet, a hundred feet tall. The FAA standard does. So I don't know what airport was feeling threatened or whether you're feeling threatened. Maybe, well, I take that back. I know Roy at one point had some kind of like private charter school that was trying to get real close to a runway. And that might have been part of it for Ogden to scare that away from even happening. And then the Ogden mayor was kind of pushing back a little bit. So maybe that's a little bit of it in our area. But it, but bottom line is this is kind of, again, being editorial and overkill response to a solution that probably could have been done a little differently, but regardless.
And it covers us.
It's in code, we're protected. It's not very hard. It'll just be on community development staff to make sure they advise way upfront. Anybody who's coming in to do a new development, a site plan development, anybody who's doing a new building permit within the area to get a clearance from FAA. And then all they have to do is contact the Ogden Airport Administrator. He'll send them the right direction and help them sponsor the application and get it taken care of.
And really, it's preventative to make sure that there aren't any hiccups or timeline delays down the road because of what might be required.
That's why you want to do it upfront, even if you never even follow through with your project, even if somebody came along and said, I want to develop this property, do this, and then they don't do it. Having that letter just done at least is out of the way if they were to move forward.
So Mike, was Tesla grandfathered in with their height of their signs that they can stay or do they have to?
Every, because they're before their site tunnel's approved, before even the state finished this code off.
So they're not going to change any height restrictions on any of their buildings or signs?
The only thing it would affect, we are working as an RDA on a combined, a bunch of combined RDA signs that are within this area, but they're gonna be, they can't be any higher than sixty feet, and they'll be far enough away that even that eighty foot, a hundred foot standard, because it says a plane ascends and descends, they'll be so far away that it would have to be like a hundred and fifty feet for it to really matter for a plane at that point.
I just didn't know if that was gonna be grandfathered in on whatever they originally agreed to, or they had to comply with the new work, new regulation?
No, they'll be fine because they got the site plan prior to the code being approved by the state, but that doesn't mean that the Ogden Airport won't be calling the city the same way they did with the America First Building and saying, hey, what's going on? Where's their, yeah, where's our acknowledgement of it?
Right. So do we have any buildings that's that tall that they would be concerned with?
That's, that's what's.
Nothing in our area.
I mean, the only nearest thing that could happen at a future date would be America First, but America First is building their buildings way down here. So far away from that, that even at, as a five story building should be of no concern. Now, if they're putting five story buildings here, I could maybe see airport leadership starting to get a little excited. But way down here, it's so far away from that incline and decline that it shouldn't be a threat to it. It won't be a threat. It's not even shouldn't. We've already had that discussion with America First. They've already vetted with the airport. It's not a concern.
So this is just a matter of self-determination instead of having it all imposed.
Yep, that's right.
It's imposed, but we determine how that's.
It'd be, it'll be, best way to say it, it'll be less painful to do it this way than to have the state impose their standard and do takings. Yeah, that's the best way to say it. Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other further discussion on the item? And if none?
I would like to make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to city council regarding proposed code addition of Title Ten, Chapter Thirteen, Article I. Airport overlay zone and airport area special regulations ordinance to be added to the Riverdale City Code as requested by the Community Development Department and required by the state of Utah.
I'll second that.
That's Article One, isn't it?
No, I.
It is I.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on that? All right, Ms. Marigoni, would you please poll the commissioners?
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Commissioner Spires?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
Commissioner and I?
Yes.
All right, that has passed unanimous. Thank you. All right, we'll move to item F, comments from the planning commission and city staff. Do we have any comments?
I would just like to, on the record, make a comment acknowledging all that Mr. Eggit has done for the city of Riverdale and the immense amount of work he has put in in his role, the planning commission. I think I can speak on behalf of all of us that it has been extremely helpful. And he has made our job a lot more easy and a lot more effective. And so we wish you the best going forward and we appreciate our time with you and all that you've done for us and for our city.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I second that.
The only thing I'd like to add is good luck. I know that you're moving on at your own choice. And I just hope that your career path continues in a good direction for you from here on out.
Thank you, Commissioner. Wishing him well and wishing good luck is genuine, but I don't think you need any luck. You've got all the talent.
Mike, you have, you're just phenomenal. You are absolutely phenomenal.
The city has been blessed having you here.
To say the least.
Thank you. That was very, very kind.
We just wish we could take some of that knowledge you have in your little brain there and place it on our head. So much knowledge about this city and what's been going on. For somebody to walk into this position is gonna be, they're gonna be at a loss because you don't, you've accumulated a lot of knowledge and has helped us.
A lot of years, and you've cleaned up a lot of stuff.
Thank you.
Big shoes to fill.
You and I had talked earlier. Is this a time where we could discuss some of those as far as friendly or as findings and friendly?
Sure.
And do that as a training? Is that possible?
Yeah, could I, could I just add one thing before we go there?
Sure.
Yeah, let's do that. I just wanted to say some of you weren't at the city council meeting last week, so I wanted to make sure I kind of echoed my comments at the council meeting and and some of you may have watched it, some of you may have heard, and I was very sincere. And what I said was, and I'll say it again, this has been the best planning commission I've ever worked with in my career. And I've been, this is my third city, and I really appreciate having a planning commission that doesn't seem to have its own agendas that aren't in alignment with just what's in the best interest of Riverdale City and its residents. And I've been in cities where special agendas come out or debates come out, battles come out, and meetings go ever long for no reason. And I don't, I never felt that in Riverdale, and that's, that's rare and that's good. The planning commission has always been super efficient and effective in talking about what needs to be talked about and taking care of what needs to be taken care of and asking the right questions at the right time. And I would just say, keep be, keep be, keep on being willing to ask the questions that need to be asked and not be afraid to, but do it with the same courtesy that you've extended to me and whoever, whoever follows me. Because I think that that's appreciated, but it's also necessary. It shows, shows the residents that do know what's going on, that you do care. And that you are a part of the community and you're doing what you can best for the community. And it also helps staff know that you're making sure that the work's being done correctly and things are being done right, and you're asking the right questions. And I know there's even times where I've been checked and planning commission's been right. And it's been helpful because if I had passed something forward and it was wrong, it could be problematic for the future. And so that is definitely your role, so please keep doing that. I appreciate my relationships with each and every one of you. I wish I could have more time getting to know some of you and working with some of you. And, you know, I, I don't know if I'll have the same planning commission relationship where I'm going. But I would hope that I do, but it may be hard to emulate or meet that, that part of my experience. This is probably, well, it is. Leaving, leaving behind the planning commissioners and Michelle are probably the hardest parts of me leaving my job. I'll be honest. That is probably the most difficult thing for me to do. And it's kind of bittersweet not knowing where I'm going. So please keep leading the city in the right direction and work hard to make it the best that it can because the residents deserve that. And you're it. You are the best. And I hope that you won't always, I hope you don't always, or I hope you don't only see planning commission is where you where you can make a difference because there are always plenty of opportunities for council too. And don't be afraid to take that step and that risk when that time comes because it can be worthwhile. And there are times where I think council needs a little help every now and again. So I'll leave it at that. I love you, city council, if you're watching. I really do. But, but. But.
Your bridges, you're welcome back.
But just keep being active and be sure to activate others in the community because that is the reward itself, is knowing that you are making a difference. And that, I guess, that's all I would say. So thank you for being a part of my life and my story. And I hope that I'll be able to meet others that are on the similar caliber that you all are for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Along in that spirit, when Mike and I spoke, because I wanted to make sure that we had good continuity moving forward for us. There were a couple of things that he brought up that I thought were worth taking note of and for consideration. And we'll consider that as a, as a commission. But I, I asked him if he would train us on a couple of things. You know, the friendly amendment and the findings of fact. I think including those findings of fact, and if you would explain that because that can, once we make decisions, that can leave us with a clear path as to why we made the decision we made instead of leaving it open for someone to generalize and interpret what our, our decision was in making that. So, Mr. Eggit, if you'd take a minute on that.
Yeah, so on findings, so if you look at the summary I provide every, every time and have provided today. I put, it would be recommended to further provide appropriate findings of fact for decisions made in this matter as applicable. And I'm trying to do that not heavy handed, but as a reminder. Findings of fact are legal shields. That's the best way I can say it. If you want the city to be protected, if you want your decision to be protected and, and for lack of a better word, sanctified, if it ever got to a legal situation, findings are factor of the way you do that. So make sure when you make a motion, it's something like, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this this, this proposed language update due to the fact that the state of Utah has required that we do it, due to the fact that it's in the best interest of the residents to protect their property interests, due to the fact that it keeps the airport operating in a safe and appropriate manner. Something like that where you do two or three good articulated findings of fact becomes something that then Michelle can put in the minutes and become preventative shields, especially if they get second and approved. If ever there becomes a legal challenge later, then the judge is gonna look at that and say, no, the planning commission articulated exactly why they made that motion, and I understand and I support it. So you have no case. But if you don't do that, then it creates this loosey goosey thing where they say, well, we're not sure why the planning commission approved it, and the judge says, neither am I. And that can get, that can get you into trouble.
And that could have helped, helped like when we had the zoning request between on Parker, between the
Storage sheds and River Glen.
And River Glen, that could have been
Yes.
a benefit to us with that decision as to why. Even with.
I think we did include a finding of fact with that one, didn't we?
I don't know. I'd have to look at the minutes.
It would, it could have helped us with.
Even with Leslie's.
Oh, Leslie's for sure. We're doing, tell me if I'm wrong, like when we're conditional use permits and things.
Even conditional use permits, yeah, there's not, there's not detrimental impact to neighboring property owner that they've done reasonable accommodations to make sure everything's screened inside, yeah, those sorts of things. The other thing is it helps with, because sometimes city council might even think in the back of their mind, and they even say it on the record, well, we're not exactly sure why the, the planning commission recommended this for approval or didn't recommend this for approval. If you remember, going back to the Parker one, it barely, it barely passed from the planning commission as a recommendation city council for approval, and then the council overturned it. But if there had been discernible findings of fact, and maybe there were, but if there's.
I don't remember, but.
But if there were.
I remember we discussed them, but whether they were included in the motion.
The motion is where it matters. But if they had it, then they can't say, well, I don't know why the planning commission recommended us approve it, right? But, but, so if you give them, then they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to now articulate why you were wrong with your findings on top of your motion if they want to overturn you. Whereas if you don't give them a reason, they just overturn.
You're telling us anytime you do a motion, you should include a fact.
At least, I would say at least two findings, up to three. If you feel strongly, four, go four.
Haven't.
Probably not, most of the time.
With what Mr. Eggit explained, it made sense and it helps to clarify and eliminate that possibility of misinterpretation down the road. And I think that that helps the city. It helps us in general. And so I'd like us to consider doing that moving forward.
I agree. I think also it can help us, whether or not some of the council members pay attention to what we do or they don't. But then they, they know, well, we didn't just say, just come into willy nilly and go out the door and.
It was a well-founded decision.
Right.
Right.
That we had a reason for our decision and our motions, and it wasn't just because.
Well, and Ken, I appreciate you tonight. After a motion and a second has been, been made that you give us the opportunity for discussion because that is the time that we can discuss the motion, we can discuss findings of fact and, and things like that. And and so, you know, I really do appreciate that, that opportunity to have that discussion once the motion is made.
Yeah, to that point, even if, if an individual makes a motion and the other person makes a second, so one of the other people, if the chair says, okay, we opened this up to comment. Does anybody have any comments about the motion? That's opportunity for the rest of the planning commissioners to say, Commissioner So-and-so, why do you feel like this should be approved? What are your findings or your thought? What's your thought process in approving this? That gives you an opportunity to clarify that so that you can maybe get on board or be persuaded or even hold firm with your own beliefs even by, by vetting that out so you can better articulate your position. And then when you make your motion, you're more resolute on it because you can stand behind the reasons for that decision.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And, and then if we need to amend a motion because, because, you know, we have found different findings of fact as we've discussed it, then we can do that.
It could be just an educational understanding too, you know, that we think we're right until it was explained. You know, and that'll change your whole perspective.
Right, yeah.
Does the city council do this when they pass something?
I have tried to educate them on this as well, but it has not been happening.
Because sometimes it'd be good, it'd be good for us to know that they pass something or denied it when we have passed it.
Yeah.
And for their reasoning with the fact.
We can always watch.
You can watch it, but sometimes they don't say why. They just, my feeling is.
And, and, and there was some, again, I don't want to say anything bad about the city council, but I'm giving a factual comment here. With what happened with the rezone request along Parker Drive, the petitioner actually said. the petitioner actually said, were your findings of fact multiple times before decision was made? And a decision was made without any finding of fact. And now it's potentially an illegal posture. And the council did not articulate findings of fact for their decision. So, you know, that, that puts the city at a little bit more risk. That's why it's so crucial to have that, especially at city council level. And you know, even if, if they, if the council sees that approach from the, the planning commission, maybe it's even a reminder, hey, we ought to consider doing this as well.
They could actually kick it back to us and say, I need your findings of fact. Could they not? They don't?
Probably not. I mean, eh, no, probably not. But it's, it's better, we have better legal guidance from Utah legacies and towns to do this because it protects us if it ever were to go legal.
That makes sense.
So I'm, I'm recommending that we incorporate that as part of our procedures now that we'll have that discussion after a motion. And there can be um a friendly amendment.
Yeah, so this goes back to what, what Commissioner Herman was talking about. So if a motion is made, and you might have seen this at council, if a motion is made and seconded, and then there's some discussion. And then somebody says, well, I like your motion, but I feel like it's lacking because it needs this with this finding. Then he could say, the chair could say, you know, Commissioner so and so, would you consider a friendly amendment from Commissioner so and so as stated? And then if the person who made the motion says, yes, I agree to that, I accept the friendly amendment, then the chair would turn the second, say second also agree, yes. Now that motion has been altered to match whatever the friendly amendment is to the motion and more complete. So you get, you, following Robert's rules, now you have a more clear motion that's even str- more strengthened by whatever has been amended to that to make it more clear. So that's what you could see.
Could you actually ask them at that point, can you tell me your findings of fact?
Yeah, if they wanted an amendment, you could just say, well, yeah, what's your reasoning? What is your reasoning? If, if you're offering, okay. So Commissioner and I, what is your reasoning for offering this amendment? And then if you, you articulate and say, okay, that makes sense, then, then it could be accepted as a friendly.
You don't have to have a friendly amendment then.
The, the chair can control kind of that dialogue and offer. Might say, so Commissioner and I, are you offering a friendly amendment with what you're, you're commenting, or is it just commentary you want to chart the group, right? That's where the chair kind of is refereeing that discussion to make sure that you get the most clear motion possible out of it.
Sounds good.
So can we put, do we put this in our bylaw? Like, how do we, how does this go?
You know, I was just thinking about this when you said that too. I actually talked to, to Chair, uh, Chair Anderson about this. Your bylaws do probably need to be looked at again. And there are your bylaws, so I will forward him, I will email, actually I'll email all of you the bylaws attached. He did ask me to do that as well. And you as commission can discuss if you want to do some, some light amendments to your bylaws to reflect some of this stuff, however you feel appropriate. And just make sure that the city attorney looks over your, your, whatever you're amending and is comfortable with it before you take it to a meeting to, to approve it. That'd be my recommendation. And maybe that would go through you to Michelle or, or you to the, the chair at that, or I mean the attorney at that point.
Need to have a public hearing.
You, you, that'd be interesting to ask Steve. I would say no, but I would say he might, he might recommend that you at least have one to give. Yeah, no, it's yours. No, you wouldn't. Just, you just, I mean, you make sure you discuss it in an open meeting, whatever your amendments are.
Between our, with all of them.
Within, yeah, in a, in a meeting.
When we're sitting here today, we want to make sure that in five or 10 years, this is still going on with whoever.
Yeah, there's, there's two, there's two approaches to amending your bylaws. You could, we could, you could give homework to each other, look at this over the next two week, two weeks, note your comments, bring it back to the meeting and we'll discuss. Or you could just have even a discussion and work session and talk about it in work session, see how you feel. Either way would work, either approach.
Sometimes I think those work sessions are so compact that it would be better to maybe ha- have a, a discussion here to be able to go over that and then
Take it home and bring it back. I agree.
Okay. Well, thank you. Uh, I think this has been really beneficial and helpful for us, so. Any other further comments or discussion?
We used to have training from the lawyer, our lawyer, Steve. Is that an ongoing thing that we should continue or is that something that they don't do?
No, it is something that should happen. I, I, I have asked him a time or two. We almost had one in November. And then with the holidays and things, never happens. I apologize. Um, that's something that Michelle, you might want to take note of, and I can talk to Steve about that as well, that, that he probably does need to do like open meetings, law training and ethical training with them again. It's been, it's probably been at least a year, if not more, since they've had it last. So, yeah. So we do need to do that again. So yes, he, he is so, still supposed to do that. We are gonna, yeah, yes. Is the answer.
I'm sure that there are some regulations and rules of what we should tell the public and what we should not. And I think until we have somebody sit with us and talk to us, how do we know for a newbie?
I, I think too, you may see him more often, at least for a while in your planning commission meetings. Again, to add that presence, so it's not on Michelle, but we'll see how that relationship works. She's the one that's going to know. To, to also so you're aware, she does have already three items pending for your next meeting. So go, go easy on her on the twenty seventh. Two conditional use permits and, and, oh, we didn't get, we didn't get an application day for land use, so that's not on. So that can't happen now. But anyway, two conditional use permits, so there's two items. So there you go.
Great.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm really sad to second. This just sucks.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. That was great.
There's a lot of stuff that was on the record that should have been, is that it's really should have been exposed to the public? Oh, just in general, our, what we're doing as a commission.